All right, well, we can get started back. Everybody's had an opportunity to stretch your legs and we can get going. Mr. Resner, where do we go from here?
I think the other thing that we talked about, having some discussion about was sewer. And I guess it's related to what we've been talking about there, but just any discussion the board wants to have on that. And I know Tim has put together a lot of information pertaining to sewer and the costs associated with that. And Tim, I don't know if you want to give an overview of all that or how you want to go through that, Mr. Chairman, whatever you think on that.
Yes, I'm just following y'all's lead, y'all. Y'all done a good job of being out of this, wherever y'all like to go with it. We got a lot to cover.
All right, we have talked about sewer for a while. And so you have cost estimates of what I did to have a, what color that is?
Peach.
Whatever.
Peach.
Something around it. And what we did was took some recently bid projects, all of them in the last five months now, and we went down what we call the sewer gray highway. That is the brown heading that should be on file. It cost roughly $8,914,670. We looked at what it would take to turn river north around and bring it back to a centralized plan along the gray highway. We're looking at roughly $8,397,120,000. And then we looked at connecting the force main at Whittaker Road, building one there, another one possibly at Dry Bone Creek out in Grizzleville, and having the infrastructure in place to serve those areas with sanitary sewer. We're looking at roughly $2,388,500,000. That's just some high level. And then we looked at a wastewater treatment plant. The last three that have bid in the state that have 1 million gallons have gone between 20 and 25 million dollars for one gallon plant. We went through construction contingencies, engineering, inspection, surveying, permitting, geotechnical, land acquisition, legal administrative. We're looking at roughly $36.2 million for full blown wastewater treatment plant. Some of this on the wastewater treatment plant would be, is questionable. We have looked at a location in central Jones County along Gray Highway, somewhere down below, we kind of joined both roads and the Canada Island Big Bend, assuming that we can make a discharge somewhere into Walnut Creek. I've not got that answer back from EPD. EPD has enacted, or US EPA has enacted a new regulation that if your discharge is more than 40%, 38% of the flow in the creek, you can't discharge it in the creek because the creek will not take the loading from the plant. Loading would be the biological oxygen demand. Okay? That could be reduced somewhere else. It may mean we end up building a plant somewhere out in Grizzleville that's a spray field. Might be cheaper to do that, certainly a lot more controversy. The other side of that, it may mean we have to go to the Oatmugge River. That is an issue in itself because if we're within five miles of the intake, make a water authority, your MBR will probably come into place because the limits will be extremely stringent because of the limit. And there are a couple of extra studies that have to be done to make sure we don't influence the intake. So this is our best guess. We went ahead and included 18,500 feet, which is about three and a half miles, to get us close to the river. And we included some legal administrative land acquisitions to buy some easements to get to the river. But there are a couple of spots we may be able to get to below the discharge, below the intake to make a water authority and then they would take that out of service. I know that doesn't mean anything to y'all, but it's, it is a change that has occurred in the last 18 months, two years of discharges in the wastewater system. It used to be if we were discharging a million gallons a day in Walnut Creek, it was a million gallons a day, it didn't matter. But in the last couple of years, that's changed.
Tim, just curious, how much room is it between the intake coming off the Oatmugge with that treatment plant out there and the county line on the riverside, riverbank? It's not much, but downstream of the, if we dump downstream into the Oatmugge River, downstream of their intake for the water authority?
How far?
What's the dist, I mean, from their intake to the Jones County line down the river, how far?
I don't know, we probably a couple thousand feet down below. River length, we probably, we probably are, we're probably 3,800.
So we're not worried about dumping in there if we're downstream, right? That's what I was getting at.
Downstream is the question.
Right. If we get just below their intake, we put our output?
Well, Monroe County is trying to discharge somewhere on July. And this calls for quite a bit of controversy.
Yeah, yeah, I know. So we don't, is Popple Street Plant pull anything? Don't pull anything out of the river, only?
We just push the river.
Right, okay. So we wouldn't have anything to worry about downstream of that area?
Hawkins Vale's groundwater, there's one office, the Oatmugge River. One office is groundwater, beyond that, everybody else is underground, up to the slant.
I'm just thinking, and the, yeah, we might have some opportunities below the intake at Amerson and above the, because that's that weird area where Bibb County comes into Jones County and along the riverbank, it's, it's Bibb County for a ways, right across from Amerson River Park. That's all Bibb County property.
That's a, the whole of the site, right?
Yep. So on the, on the Bibb County side, where the intake is, I mean, where you put in for the canoe launch at Amerson River Park, just across river down a little bit is about where the county line comes across. And then you can see the next bend up is where the intake is for, so I'm thinking it's maybe a few thousand feet there, but still vacant.
Yeah, it's two, three thousand feet. I mean, I think we, as long as we're below it, I think we'll find it. If we're above it, we definitely need to be above Highway 18, that Amerson area discharge.
Yeah, we need to be below it.
But when you think, thank you, Sam. When you think about where we'd have to be to be below it versus doing surface treatment at the industrial park, cost, which one is cheaper? And then in terms of real pushback that we'd have to deal with, which is worse, going into the river or being near a water source where we have wells?
If we went to the property that we have looked at, I think we'd be a mile farther from the water sources. I don't think that would be an issue. But the problem we run into typically with land application, one, it all depended on the ground per, because you're going to spray it, grow a coast over, use a hay or something. Growing hay is, is an easy thing to do, but it's got to be maintained. You got to kill the reeds out of it, you got to cut it, it's got to be removed because the hay takes up the nitrogen and it'll leach out the grass into the groundwater.
Yep.
And that's a real problem. But nobody ever buys enough property. They never buy enough property when they do land application.
So we know that's going to be factored into the cost, right?
In reality, there are two tracks out there owned by a timber company, they're probably 1,100 acres, probably can spray on 500 acres, which would be cleaning for what we leave.
Okay.
It's got a lot of farmhouse in there. But I don't know if that would be an issue or not.
From an EPA standpoint, in terms of what you're putting back out, is that a plus or a minus for farmhouse?
It could really matter. You would probably, the folks out there probably would want Canadawood, just so they'd know it's all contaminated well.
Yep.
But when you put all the factors together, I don't know if it'd be cheaper or not. We hadn't sat down and gone through it enough to make sure of all that, but it probably could be. The one thing about land application, the original guidelines came out in 92. They were revised in 2018, so they've been 26 years and they weren't touched by the state. Point discharges to the river, they get reviewed every five years, it is rarely changed every five years.
Does it make sense to be preemptive and A, acquire the land because the land's not going to get cheaper and it may not be available? And then B, getting your right of ways to the river and having that factored in? So if the state changes the rules and say, hey, you know what, we can only allow this much discharge into the river, we beat somebody into it, right? If there was a race against another neighboring county?
Well, if we, if we bought the property for land application, you're not going, the river's not going to be easy.
Okay.
We're not going to go to the river. We'll treat it out there on the side and spray it on the ground and go on. If we build a treatment plant in the, on Gray Highway and go to the river, you're probably looking at what's considered a 5-5 permit, 5BOD, 5 subsequent solid. You're going to have filters on it. It's going to be closed for drinking a little part. We'll spray it on the ground or what they, the ground treats it.
Right.
The ground takes care of it. This needs to sit down. Really, we need to get a geologist, like, here's some sites, which ones do you think are best? And it may, it may be worthwhile spending some money to go out there and check it. Because I've got a project right now where we looked at it, they looked at it and said, yeah, this looks pretty good. Guess what? Half of it didn't work.
Well, I think about that component as well as if you put it at Grizzleville, there's a different cost of going to Grizzleville versus being on Gray Highway.
Right.
So the plant is one part of it, but then bringing the sewer to the plant and then being able to manage that part in terms of the entire scope of the project monetarily is what I think about. Obviously, Gray Highway may be a bit more central for servicing certain areas, but it's not necessarily central for servicing the industrial park. You could do it, it just costs more money.
Well, the reason we've looked at Gray Highway because from a potential site on Gray Highway to the industrial park is about 36,000 feet and the river north is about 32,000 feet.
Mm-hmm.
From river north there, the overall elevation from beginning to end is about 60 foot, maybe 70. Now, there's some ups and downs, but from start location to end of location is about 70 feet. Same with industrial park. So that's, that's the only reason we've looked there because it seems like it'd be pretty easy to, it'd be about the same each way to get it there. The problem, the potential problem is the discharge location. Cannot discharge it in Walnut Creek. Industrial park, land application, the actual, you know, where this construction cost is 21 million, that land application probably happened after. Then you buy the property and you have a little bit of a force main cost of whatnot. There'll be some, there'll be some day-to-day operational challenges because when you're that's about 180,000 gallons. River north doesn't produce 180,000 gallons, so you're not turning it over every day.
Right.
So when it comes out the other end, it's going to be nasty because it's going to go septic.
So we want to keep that on this side of the county? Okay.
So that's, and that's the reason Gray Highway, I don't have that problem with Gray Highway.
Right.
Whatever I bring, I turn the force main over every day. You don't think about it, we did the elementary school southwest lawns, goes to the city of Reeds, little small town. Eight years we collapsed a manhole we discharged into force main about 8,000 feet, six inches. They keep the force main turned over. When school, when they started, they filled the pump station up till they pumped enough water to clean the force main out. And they cut it off because they didn't dig it off somewhere. And they quit doing that, it ate, it ate the concrete manhole up. And it's, one day it was there, next day it was gone. It just dissolved it. And it'll turn, if there's any hydrogen sulfide, that rotten egg smell too, it'll turn to sulfuric acid and it eats everything it touches. And that's, so in looking at this, we try to look at some of the operational issues because if I pump that far, probably across Walnut Creek, I have a pump station, I have to add caustics over some chemical to change the complexity of the wastewater so it's not septic or it's not as bad as septic. So there's nothing worse than getting a phone call because you've eaten up a million dollar pump station with acid. That's hard to explain. I know that because I did it once.
Okay. Don't do it here, Tim.
Yeah.
Learn from your mistakes, Tony.
And we'll sup, put something on anybody's radar. We didn't, nobody, we were serving about 3,000 ounces, didn't think anything about, did not turn it over. We were staying for four days to come out. And then coming out the other end, it was about a two and a half feet age. Just now standing still cable, one path, we were bending it. Three S K, it was like breaking a king cake.
Wow.
So this is that process.
Really, really can move forward?
Really need to sit down and study and look at it and say, all right, if we do this, this is what we got, we do that, this is what we got. A land application may be the cheapest, may be the cheapest area to make.
All right, so when you're saying land application, I just pulled up the, so property that's beside the industrial park is, it's 315 acres, that's a timber company?
Mm-hmm. Go across into the road, you go down the dirt road. There are two tracks down there.
Warehouse.
Tim, you mentioned about cutting hay or whatever on it. What's the better application? Are we growing pine trees or, I know you can do it, but I think I've heard you can do it both ways.
You can. A lot of folks that grow pine trees use drip irrigation and they literally lay it on top of the ground. But when you cut pine trees, tear it all up to replace it all.
Right, redo it.
If you do, if you use land app, there are two types of land application. One is drip irrigation, which is put in subsurface at 10 inches, and the other one's sprayed to what we call, use a big gun, sprays a hundred-foot diameter circle. You end up growing your pine trees at the edge of the swamp. They don't grow under the gun. And literally it's grass and it runs down to them and they soak it up. We did that in Fitzgerald. All of the spray fields are lined with pine trees, just for that reason. The issues with land application, you have to maintain the grass. Spraying that type of water on that field will compact the sand. So somebody's got to, you really need to.
Irrate it.
Irrate it. Every couple of years, it needs to be irrigated. And you can add nitrogen, you can add a little bit of what hydrated lime you got to keep your soils checked. But a good, Tiffy has a drip system, they're putting on 15 acres, they're getting 98 rolls of Alicia hay every time they cut it. They cut it six times a year, every seven, eight years.
How much of them melt hay?
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Is it mulch? I've heard some places it's just mulch quality, others can make feed quality.
There, there's a Alicia and it's a feed quality.
How much is that?
I've never fed Alicia's.
Yes, form of.
It's around there, of course, it's the guy that's looking at the feed.
50 to 100 roll.
So 50 times 100, right?
But then you got half a million dollars' worth of equipment to do it too.
Oh.
Jeffersonville had, there for a while, somebody cutting it, and I think that fell through, but you get back to timber and I actually worked on, was Jonesboro, had that and I did, you know, back in my previous life of timber. I worked that one and that was just a nightmare in itself. I mean, the ground was so, I mean, middle of summer, we couldn't hardly get it out of there, but you're talking about tearing up everything we, you know. But they had both, they had the drip and they had the.
Spray gun.
See, when you have, when you have drip, I can go 25 feet to a property line. When I spray it above the ground, I'm 150 feet from a property line, I'm 300 feet from a house. With the drip, there's no odor. But the difference between the drip and regular land application is a drip system has a very strong filter system on it. So you're not putting any particles out, your soil is very, very low. With your spray, you're, I think your solids can be 30 parts per million because you're spraying it out on the ground, but this way.
But the drip, if you're trying to harvest grass or the cheese, you're going to tear it up?
Well, with drip, if you're growing a coast of shit, you need to hay with drip, you're not going to fit it because it's 10 inches deep.
Okay.
And you're going to cut the grass and mulch it, do whatever it rolled, do whatever it goes to. Now, if you're trees, yeah, you're going to tear it pieces. You want, you want hair, please.
Speaking of the trees, what's the cutting cycle? I know this is wetland area, so what we're doing, but what would be the 20 years, 10 years, 15?
Well, 12, 12 and 17.
Okay, it's going to grow quicker because of the moisture availability.
We, we de-sliced the pond, I won't tell you where it caused that. It was pumped into a geotech bag, let it dry about a year and a half. They split it open, spread it among their pine trees. In four and a half years, they doubled in size and they were about 40 feet when they put the slug on. Yeah, they, 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 I mean, it was amazing to watch and, you know.
You can't thin it, you got to cut it, try it.
Right, right.
And depending on who's doing your cutting and who's doing your operations, you can disconnect the drips, take the hoses up and cut your trees and lay it back down, what's used to stump in. We've got folks who, we got folks who did point discharge, who do drip, got folks who do drip and do point discharge. And it's just, it's all about the soil and how well it fers, what it'll take, what it'll raise.
We need a geologist to help us with that?
Yeah.
So that's our starting point?
Well, yeah, we would give one to identify the property and then contact property owners if they would figure out the test and go test.
That's obviously not a local geologist, that would be somebody, I mean, like geotechnical or somebody like that, or Preston, they wouldn't be here.
Typically, we, we use a company, Nutter Associates out of Athens. Dr. Nutter was one of the driving forces for drip and with spray irrigation. He did a lot of work with it. So that's, that's typically, when you're looking at probably at least $100,000, you'll come and look at an area, get a little bit of that investment. We, we use them, the maximum loading you can have is 2.8 inches of water per acre. Two inches of, two inches per acre is 52,000 gallons of, over, over a specified acre. Add two inches for the, the maximum's 2.5 for spray, this 2.8 for drip. Most geotech firms will give you two, they will give you two, they certainly won't give you 2.5 because of liability. Because it's all about the profitability of soil. If you don't maintain the profitability, it starts running off. That becomes a point of discharge, that's a violation of the law. But most of them won't touch it when you don't. But if I get, if they test the track of land and tell me it's, it's 1 inch, I'm getting 26,000 gallons an acre. So to do a million gallons, my acre is doubled from 2 inches. And this, the soil study is the most critical part of it because it's going to determine your wetted area, I mean, acres you need, what your loadings are, your hydraulic conductivity of the soil and of the groundwater and all those different aspects of it. Was that a pride, the whole of them?
If we get to the point that we need to look into it, maybe some of these timber companies, I've got some contact, good contact at this time on, you know, if we can even Anything else on sewer?
Just a, I'll just take it just a second. You have a cost estimate that's got red, dead. We talked to the health department, there are five areas in the county now that are having issues with septic tanks. Three of them are in this, three of them, yeah, three of them are in this one. There's some, I don't think I'm as testing it here, 78, 19, that's a, 97, 13 is 110, 39. Thirty-nine, a hundred forty-nine. Probably, probably a hundred fifty houses just started. Much easier to do it when they build it than have to go back in. Because of all of the problems. You know, a lot of these subdivisions have rock exposed, and so I gotta blast. So I gotta have a pre survey done on the house to make sure there are no cracks, foundation issues. So when I blast, if something shows up, I know what was there, what was not there. That's another padded experience. Some of these areas have underground power, which is another issue. There are a ton of easements to be done. The lavender, uh, whatever color this is. The other one that's Crestview. This is Jason's, Chris and Trace, and over the circle, this is Jason's neighborhood. Did we need a look at sewer in that area? There are about seventy homes there. There's about two point seven million. Both of these projects, both of these projects are relying on a series of pump stations go up and down gray highway. If you went to a treatment plant, you're on a treatment plant. You would have to have some of these that are with the brown heading. You'd end up with Bonner Creek, you didn't, uh, one probably that named Paul Ford. You'd end up with possibly one at Bradley's Lake, we might get around that one. You'd have one at Sand Creek, you'd probably have one at Rock Creek. So a lot of these days he chained together. Of course, you could add some of the pump stations later and just construct horse lanes. Several different options to look at, several different combinations to put it together.
I just wanna say on, in those neighbor, not those particular neighborhoods, cause I don't think they're gonna fit into the CDVG guidelines. For the ones that do and, and that we've already identified. For some reason, I thought we were planned first so we could apply for CDVG every year.
Every other year.
Every other year. You know, we should make that the priority. Because once a treatment plant is built, we'll have these ready to go areas. And we will have paid maybe twenty-five percent, maybe max fifty percent for their construction. And of course, we have ready-made clients or potential customers. It doesn't help going up to Banner Creek or any of the others, but the pieces in the middle that helped put this together. To make it make sense over the long run, I think is just a no-brainer. And I wrote down where y'all had various subdivisions. I was thinking Kingsley Village and Hampton Lakes. And I know right now I'm making Water Authority services those, but those are large pockets of potential customers. Right? Even Sun Valley, I mean, we, we're paying for it and we're paying for it. But it's in our district, right? So I'm looking forward to connecting, uh, the Altons, the McCarrys and the Bethoons to get over to a wastewater treatment facility so we can start collecting some income off of that.
I know we're, we're, as a county, are taxed for money. You know, it would be nice if you could take a squash and do it. Although you can do that with the, I know there's how eighteen dent service being paid on squash. Yale's being paid for our squash. Somebody's gotta do something at courthouse.
But this is where sort of that comprehensive plan comes into play where if you're investing forty-five million, that you're gonna see six hundred, a thousand, two thousand customers, that make it make sense, right? So the payback happens, or at least a good portion of the payback happens as we continue to expand the pro, the, the project. One thing y'all taught me a long time ago was go to the high density areas, right? And that's a no-brainer. And for me, it's high density and it's also places that we've invested in the infrastructure. Or we can get some reasonable investments whether it's CDVG or Jifa, where our cost to getting those customers is relatively low. So I, I just want that added as a thought, you know? I don't wanna just drop a plant for the sake of. And we hope that putting it on gray highway, we attract some businesses where we know putting it in an industrial park absolutely gets you something, right?
Well, but the, but y'all have voted to, to do the three million for the horse lane.
Correct.
Remember, it's a pipe. You hook the pipe to it, it goes either direction, it doesn't care.
Right.
I think the, whether Jones County drills more wells, builds a suburbs water plant, builds a wastewater plant. Regardless of what it is, the most important thing we remember is the only way to drive those fixed costs down is to sell water. Or sell sewer. So you've gotta be looking at and be diligent about expanding the system to touch more customers that you touching in-house.
Yep. We rely on y'all for that, cause we don't know where all of them are.
Well, we got three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars now budgeted for dent service making the water authority. Or, or sewer service. That's why I'm bringing River North over here. As, as part of this, you got to, you got to, we gotta have fifty rigs, we gotta have whatever. All of that, all of those areas we, we gotta have, but we gotta figure out where to expand to pick up other cousin. Any other questions? You need some time? No, that might be your headache.
No, I just wanna execute it at the end of the day, get her done.
I think Commissioner Ball, I think I'm giving her a headache.
All right, so I'm just gonna ask this question, it may sound like a stupid question, but I need to know this. All right, so these two projects right here, would they feed in with the same River North? If we had a sewage treatment plant?
No.
Would, this would be a separate?
What? All right, so didn't you school us a minute, you know, fifty miles?
Okay.
The creek that runs under highway, under gray highway, right up, right up the bypass. It's Bonner, I think it's Bonner Creek, what it's called.
First one.
Yeah, very first one.
Yes.
The drains behind this subdivision.
Yes.
The drains ain't clogged, the drains on the lifetime.
Feeds all those little lakes that are private, little lakes that are there, yes.
They all drain that way, so ideally we can get easements and gravity feed it all down through that way. But not, we'd have about five, six pump stations to collect and pump and move over and that type of thing.
And then where would we need it up to?
If you build a station there, Bonner Creek, somewhere in that area, in your plant, you'd end up carrying it to the south end of gray highway. Somewhere down there.
Using Bonner Creek.
It would tie up with, uh, it would tie up with a line coming from River North. So if the plant wasn't there, you'd have a large pump station down there somewhere. That would pump to the, to the east toward the, that's the problem. The, the problem we run into, from the railroad track right out here, all the way down to the rock board. Pretty much every creek drinks the water from it. Everyone goes to water from it.
Yep.
And so that's a lot of gravity.
And what's the elevation difference between here and say county line at?
Two hundred sixty feet.
Two hundred sixty feet between gray and Macon?
Two hundred sixty vertical feet.
So pumping everything from that way this way?
It's non-alien.
It's non-alien.
Yeah, every other street.
Let it go downhill.
Yeah.
And from the industrial park up in the gray, it's fifty-five thousand feet. It's eleven miles, right at eleven miles. Ten and a half.
Is there any location that's?
What, what's the difference east and west, or well, it'd be north and south, wouldn't it? From, from like coming down Joy Cliff towards River North, from?
From, from River North.
To the industrial park?
It's about sixty-six thousand feet.
Elevation difference?
It's less, it's less than a hundred fifty feet. It's like, it's like seventy feet from River North to gray highway and about sixty feet from the industrial park to gray highway.
Okay, so we're sloping from gray back to Macon, but from River North to the industrial park is more level. I mean, there, there's a little bit of slope, yeah. So running east and west is a much better than trying to run from south to north, or I guess?
Go south, don't come back north, cause it's gonna be costly.
Right.
It's from pump station number one, which is the old wastewater treatment plant in River North. To gray highway's thirty-seven thousand feet. And from the industrial park to Sun Valley, it's thirty-two thousand feet. So they're almost, almost exactly the same.
Yeah, distance, I thought you meant thirty-two thousand feet elevation, dang.
No, it's just, that's, uh, that's right.
Yeah.
You gotta headache, kid.
Yeah.
She has it cause of her.
Just more zeros behind it.
Yep.
I'm just doing some.
Where's all this money gonna come from?
Exactly, that's.
That's our debt, I mean, we did everything, the water sewer and the subdivisions. Three point three million a year.
We have a, a very long range plan to, to build this thing. But we gotta do it smart, cause it, you know.
The, the problem we, the problem I see is most of these subdivisions are right on the edge, edge of gray. We all serve on the county road. But you're getting, the ones that back up to the lakes, especially off Lifetime, a place to replace it. There's no place to replace gray, but. So most houses, then, so most houses probably about sixty-six feet off there. Which is another, most of Brandon's dismudged in one of these cost estimates we talked about. Putting the environment one, grinding pump two, cause we can't, we can't deep for other houses.
No, a lot of those, I mean, like I know in, um, Aaron's Circle, on Aaron's Circle there, Caitlin. I mean, those, I, I know one person that this is their second septic tank and they're, they tore up their whole yard in a swimming pool. To, to get a soup system for their house. Uh, and although like everything is in the front yard of the house now, so.
Some, these subdivisions, if you go ride, if you went load them a month ago before the grass drained up, you could pick out everybody has septic tank water. A bit of a master's dream.
Just did my daughter's, it was, uh, thought I'd do it myself for a while, but luckily I didn't have to come in out of retirement, but it was head and lakes.
Yeah.
Takes eighteen thousand dollars later, we finally got it in there, but it was, uh.
Um, I know there's some people that use, call the septic tank services every other month to come and, oh yeah, because their septic's are not draining at all.
Yeah, we have, we had a guy that pumped out two thousand gallons septic tank, they pumped nine thousand gallons out of it. It was all groundwater. They kept pumping and just kept running back in it.
Yeah.
Didn't really stop.
Yeah, because all trined it out, got everything pumped out and quit.
So Chairman, looking at it from a big picture, I think we see that just based on the numbers we got here. There's, I mean, there's no amount of money that we can throw at it to fix this at, at one time.
Right.
And even with the numbers we got, with every budget dollar we got, a, a, and, you know, even if we raised taxes, raised rates and, and took all the money out of the general fund that we got, we still couldn't do it. So there's no way to get it without having what they talked about, selling water or selling sewer to new customers. That's gotta be, to me, that's gotta be our focal point. And I know that, that is the worst, because I know every one of our districts has people that we fight for that are at the edge of everything. I mean, I got them in Juliet, I've got them up going out, uh, Old Clinton Road. John's got them up Bradley and, and Wayside and Haddock and go all the way out, Forty-Nine and Fifty-Seven. And I mean, every, all the exteriors of the county, we have communities that we know when the nucleus is the center and everything was originally built from the center of a, of a geographical location out. It has to come back to this area to, to feed in. And I know that's the hardest part, but, and it's always been hard to get out there. But if we don't have those customers, we're never gonna be able to do it. But we gotta have the, we gotta have the wells, we gotta have the pumps, we gotta have the water and we gotta have the tanks and we gotta have the systems for the sewer on the opposite side to work our way out there. So I think holistically, we gotta look at what are the components that we have to borrow for now to get in place so that we get the first level of customers, let them have, pay the debt on it, move to the next set of customers so that we can tell everybody there is a plan. Because you're always gonna hear, I'm always gonna hear from, from River North and from Juliet that River North says we have to pay for our own stuff, because we're a special tax district, so everything is on our own backs. Juliet has basically said, we know we'll never get anything here, which way of miles from the nearest civilization other than Monroe County? And that's not our county. So, uh, you know, and, and we talk about all of our, our individual districts have these situations and have these areas. We gotta figure out how to make the big plan so that at least they know, everybody knows that there is a plan and that we're working that way. And to get, you know, if we build it on gray highway, just using hypotheticals, we've built it on gray highway and we span, expand it from the south end of gray to the big county line. That corridor and people start building businesses there, they're the customers that are building up the fund to move to the other side of gray and to the west of gray and east of gray to get that, um, to get that build out. Because there's just no other way to do it. I mean, we're sitting here looking at now, we're talking about a debt payment of, you know, three hundred thousand to a million a year on the needs we have. When we start adding all the needs together, we're looking at three and a half million dollars a year. I mean, that's, that's four meals, over four meals. You know, there, there's no way we can, we can't, we can't tax ourselves enough to make that happen. Then you know how people go and see ya.
And we got people right now that's been years. I mean, but, well, both Commissioner Martin and, and Commissioner Ball, I mean, y'all've got people that've been years without water. That I'm, I'm looking on this grid, uh, I mean Kitchen Road is, is basically out at this time, isn't it?
Home Rock says keeps the roads done, but we've, we've added some more to it to make sure. We have tried to make sure what one area's got, the other area's got, same, same amount.
Right. But I mean, we, I'm just looking at like Kitchen's Road, there's people on Kitchen's Road that happened, here recently lost wells that are, if I'm correct, Kitchen Road right there, Martin Marana.
Right.
On the hill.
And then you, you go out further, you pick up, there's, there's been forever the.
Moore Stevens.
Moore Stevens and, and, uh, there's a chicken farm out there that loses his well a couple of times a week. Every time the quarry blasts, he has to, you know, he's, he's got to be ready, because he knows he's gonna, you know, he's gonna have four chicken houses with no water and he's gonna have to get the water back on, so, um. Okay, we got, we got a lot of needs right now. We, we just got to be smart. Again, like y'all said, we, we gotta come up with a game plan and, uh, stick with it and, and that would. Again, like y'all said, we, we gotta come up with a game plan and stick with it and, and that would, again, just like Ballin County did, they expanded and it took, it took them a while, but they got it there. We just need to be smart. You know, I don't think this board's gonna see everything through. I don't know, a couple of y'all might be young enough to be, but I don't know that, you know?
Well, we're gonna see it start.
Yeah, we're gonna get it started.
We gotta have a plan.
So I call it a legacy, and it's gonna be a legacy plan, 'cause it's what it's gonna take to, you know, start it now and continue to get where it needs to be and, and to see all these districts' needs, you know, that all got the same needs.
And I see, Chairman, I hope this board will commit enough that we get far enough down a path that any other board can't say, "Well, let's go back," 'cause it'd cost them as much to go back as it would to keep going down the same path. That's how you get to the end point, that's how you get five splotches down the road. You know, you, you, you make a commitment that is substantial, and I think, you know, I think we gotta do it.
Where do we go now, from now with the work session?
I got it. All right.
Sure.
We're gonna come back and look at the costs associated with an in-house crew, salaries, benefits, insurance, equipment needed, vehicles, whatever, number of people. So that we gotta report back to y'all on that.
And then actually, now, research the use of the mill to, to run improvements everywhere.
And can we get an update on the splotch? I know we've allocated out for Highway eighteen and of course jail. What number or amount is gonna be available in the next one and then in the next one?
I think that's a, a, a good point that we have to start thinking and talking about now, because I think we have to make those commitments. I don't see how we can make a commitment like this and then expect to divvy up the next splotch like we have the last ones. And I think those are gonna be hard decisions and tough choices, but, you know, and, and it's tough, because no matter how much money you throw at something, it's inevitable, inevitable that it has to be maintained. And ten years away from the splotch that it was built with, everything needs to be touched up again, you know? Whether it's recreation or jail or, or, you know, pipes or whatever, it's gotta be, it's gotta be looked at again ten or fifteen years down the road. So many people forget about that lifecycle cost and then forget about that sustainability part. You know, it looks great now and you can buy, build a brand-new house and pay for it, but by the time you get it paid for, you either gotta build a new one or you're living in a falling-down house. So.
Finance needs.
Can you tell that to my husband?
Let's leave the yard a little while.
Finance needs to be included too on our, you know, we're talking about a mill. We also need to, you know, sit down with finance and either get her blessings or her ideas that, uh, you know, she, she's the lady who knows what we can and can't do, and if she says the mill's not gonna work, you know, she, you know, we need to know that too. You know, we've talked about it before, we need to talk about it. I mean, that's, that's, that's another key component, finance. And like to hear her, her blessings, one way or the other. If it's a smart idea or, you know?
It, it can happen or it can't. Are y'all interested in us getting a cost from y'all just to do a tabletop review to pick property for land application sites? To look at it, or you're gonna wait?
I'm interested if we're going to deploy the strategy of, of implementing a wastewater treatment plant. I mean, if we're not gonna do it, then I don't wanna waste the time and the money. But if we know we're gonna do a wastewater treatment plant, absolutely.
What is your comfort level on distribution, distributing into Elk Mogy, one of the creeks?
Elk Mogy probably, I wouldn't think did the wasteload allocation for Elk Mogy, so Elk Mogy would be a problem.
I just, I don't know my, and I don't know the ins and outs. I am definitely not an engineer, but I'm just thinking, if the land differentiation between here and here is leveler than from here to here, we carry all that stuff towards the Elk Mogy River, dump it below the treatment plant out there, and then we have the gravity feed from this side.
Down there.
That's our, to me, that would be our least expensive option. And then we don't have to worry about capacity, we don't have to worry about creating the amount we can put in a creek or the land that we'd need to spray it, drip it, spread it.
Then let's, let's do this, let's, let's submit a wasteload allocation to the state. Give them two locations, we give them one on Walnut Creek and one on the river, and get an answer back from them saying, "Yes, you do this and this and these are your limits."
Now, I'm just basing mine on logic. I need you to base it on engineering.
Either way, if, if I have a point discharge, I gotta know what the limits are of the receiving stream, because that's gonna dictate the level quickly that they have. And if I, if I do look at land application, I've gotta know what the soil quality is, because it dictates how many acres you gotta have. So either way, my first step either way, if, if you think land application is in, we'll get them to identify some areas and look at, you know, and just take soil map and whatnot and other data they use. And if this, what we do both of them.
Well, with the start.
The allocation ain't gonna cost you anything at time, because it'll take state six months to install.
I was just wondering if, then, then I say, if it don't cost you anything at the time, get all six months at one time, all three applications in, maybe they get them back. But is, is it, are, are we thinking an option to dump into the creeks or an option for a land application or an option to go to the river? It seems like going down Gray Highway, the creeks would be the first closest, best, gravity-fed, would be the cheapest.
But they're gonna be the limit based off flow.
Right.
Because they're gonna have the smallest loading cables on it.
So do we look at selections?
This way. When the day comes and somebody does a DDR, a design development report, they're gonna look at land application and they're gonna look at point discharge, because state gonna require it too.
How many acres are we looking at if we did the facility and spray?
Eleven hundred, right?
If you, if you did, if you did a plant and it's spray.
Be a large truck.
Especially had to have a buffer and everything.
So, uh...
You gotta take it off the tax books.
Probably for the spray fields, you're gonna need, typically, if you have a hundred acres of wetting, you're gonna have another hundred acres of buffer. Because you're, you know, you're a hundred fifty off your property lines, three hundred feet off the nearest town, fifty feet off the stream. And then the premium plant, probably two hundred fifty acres, three hundred acres. Have, have them in them.
I was thinking it more than that.
Well, typically, we buy more than that, because most timber companies don't keep tracks wherever, and they turn around and sell them, and you don't know who you're gonna hit next, especially your neighbor next door. And I've got a couple of places, every time it rains hard and the flow goes up at the plant, DPD gets phone calls from the downstream neighbor. And it's just, and it's just a pain to handle. So if you found a tract that was four fifty, five hundred acres, five fifty, I was, I was, and it was good quality dirt, I'd snag it. Then we just fence it and put trees all the way around it and spray out the middle of it and be there with it. I'll show you the, I'll show you the pieces I was looking at.
Anything else for this work session? Done, we'll, we'll move to citizen comments. Good with that? Or you got any, any citizen comments?
Good.
Citizen comment?
Citizen comments wanna come forward? Where the citizen comments part of our work session? You're absorbing it. Well, come on, you know?
Come on and talk to us.
Come on, talk with, again, we know who you are, but just for whoever's watching, if you're in, make sure the microphone's a little light on.
Green light on.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my last name is Green, so, but, uh, but, uh, I, I, I've been here everything. I wanted to hear "but." I, I do like the meeting and what you're doing. And one thing that I did here was, and over the years of working, most of my time was just a computer program with county governments, probably thirty-six over the years. Anytime you can do something on the inside, it's, it's better. Especially if it's an ongoing, like my, my young man says, "That question calls back." And so I'm, I'm not a fan of exterior, unless, if you can do it on the inside, because when you do things on the contract, you're at their mercy. But you have more control on, on, on the inside. So I did, I enjoy myself today, you know? I don't know when the next one is, I wanna come back and hopefully I hear what I wanna hear, but you know, we're still listening, okay?
We have a first, every first and third Tuesday.
I got you, yeah, I know. Thurgood's coming back.
All right, any more, anyone else on the citizen comment? Uh, any commissioner comment?
I think this is just what we needed, Chairman, and as far as real discussions and real knowing where we need. Now, we just need to get back to the three, we got three items they're looking at, major items to bring back, and we'll figure out where the next, what the next step is.
Is that, got, got everybody educated on, you know, where we're at, what we're, what we're, what our challenges are, both on the board and outside? So I think it's great.
Just gotta work forward.
To continuing to improve the system to cover areas not improved now.
We got a challenge. We said we, we've got a big one. Well, if there's no other comments, we can get adjourned.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
The work session.
All right, we'll be back here at four-thirty for our city discussion. How we doing?